Before we begin. So.
Session order, please stand for saying a pledge of allegiance.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna turn it over to the superintendent for our Falcons of the Month awards.
Okay, good evening. This, for those of you in the audience tonight, the board is really excited every once in a while. This is one of our favorite times we have students here that we can recognize for their great work. Today, we have the distinction of honoring our next group of Falcons of the Month. Each school in our district celebrates newer students each and every month for being simply outstanding. We have asked their schools to select one individual from the many who are honored to represent the group. Therefore, the students we will be honoring tonight were selected because they were certified to the traitor characteristic being celebrated during that month. In other words, the students who are being honored tonight, they are the best of the best. So what I, what I, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read each certificate and we'll call each student up. When the student comes out, they'll shake my hand, they'll take their certificate, and they'll walk through the line and shake the hand of each person that's there, okay? The certificate reads, whereas the philosophy of education of the Niagara Lake Field Central School District calls for aiding all students in the development and achievement of their potential. And whereas the primary goals of the school district include encouraging each student to develop a sense of values, instill a feeling of responsibility to self and others, as well as an appreciation of good citizenship. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Niagara Lake Field Central School District hereby recognizes, and our first student that we're going to honor tonight is Valentina Leon. Valentina. Next, we have Sawyer Bilson. Sawyer. Next, we have James J. W. Yarker. Next, we have Natalie Byrd. Next, we have Lauren Soto. I ask you, Nora Radha Krishnan. So I want to say congratulations again to all of our winners, give them a nice round of applause. Now, normally on that table back there, there is punch and cookies, so I have to apologize that person was, who usually does that to our kids, that my home sick today looks like. So tomorrow, all of you who won today will have your pick of desserts at lunch, I'll make sure that that happens. So normally there's cookie and punch, if you want a punch, we'll have cookies, ice cream, or whatever else that you're prepared, it's okay for you to eat. Okay, so that'll be there for you tomorrow. But I know Mr. Sable probably want to take a break for a few minutes to, to come around and congratulate all of you again.
Okay, we'll reconvene at twenty-five after, for three minutes, after we resuscitate.
Moving on with the consensus agenda items, call for motion accept the consensus agenda as submitted. Or anything to discuss on there? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those abstaining, motion carries. Call for motion to accept personnel report as submitted.
I'll second.
Anything to discuss? Or talk about separately? All right, now, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those abstaining, motion carries. All right, um. Communications to the board, just, uh, report the, um, I contacted NISB by a question a board member had about, um, the, the voting process and, um, we are not able to make the terms, three-year terms, they have to be, uh, stay in the pattern that they are there, so. That was just to clarify that one piece. All right, ex-official student members report.
Right, um, so yesterday, today, the eighth grader shadow that posies went around, uh, I didn't do it this time, but I, I know some kids in my class who did it, and, uh, first time, uh, with those with like star point. It was, uh, really fun for the eighth graders, so I, well, I seen, I think, and heard that, uh, our kids had a good time and learned a lot. Um, the juniors went to the, the National College Fair, um, which was at the Buffalo Niagara Convention Center. Um, the seniors started voting for what food will be served at prom, and, uh, spring sports have begun.
You mean winter sports part two? We were joking around at, uh, with the track coaches, we're joking around that we had more practices outside for, uh, indoor track than we have at the outdoor track. All right, um. Superintendent's report.
Staffing. Okay, just a quick little update on staffing, we have two upcoming job fairs, uh, we attended one last week, and they have secured a few bus driver trainees, so that's really good positive news that comes sometimes from those events. Um, obviously, we're at the point now where we're planning through the budget staffing for next year and taking a look at numbers, certainly matching student numbers to, uh, staffing numbers and our needs for next year. So that's a little bit of a project, it's always a fun project, so that's what we're currently working on right now. Thanks.
A few other items I have, uh, one, congratulations to the cast crew, get everybody involved with, uh, Newsies, the musical, uh, that, you know, this, this year I got a, a very different perspective of the musical, um, being backstage for the entire musical, and, you know, I've been, been backstage before and seen bits and pieces of it, but watching the, um, in- incredible timing and, you know, almost flawless the way that the students who are in the, um, crew kind of move things around from scene to scene. It's awesome, it's, it's amazing to see, to watch. The other things that are really awesome, and if you're not involved in musicals and you've never been backstage to, to see this, the, the amount of support that the students provide to one another during the production when they come on and off the stage, right? You know, be- being out on stage in front of, you know, in some cases your peers in front of a packed house, obviously a pretty incredible thing for, for anyone, but a, but a high school student, it's just an amazing thing, and the students, they, they don't break from character, they're in the last, as a matter of fact, they didn't break from character until the final curtain went down, and then they're jumping around backstage because they were so excited. So just watching how they interact, support one another, truly incredible, and I, I want to give significant props to, uh, one of the, one of the stars, or many stars of the show, but Aiden, who was, um, one of the characters who Steve and I both got to work with because we played the roles of, the role of Nunzio on the two different, on the different nights, but, um, watching how a student, while I'm supposed to be shaving him, zero background in music, right, or musical experience, while I'm supposed to be shaving him, and he doesn't flinch, he doesn't react any, that he stays in character, and he's singing, and tru- truly amazing, and, um, I just, I give them so much credit, I think I had five things to do and I messed up two of them, okay? You know, and, and, and I talked to you about support, the support that they give for one another, you, you want, I mean, this is pretty neat, right? That student came up to me and said, "How you liking it?", right near the end of the first act, and I said, "Oh, you guys are great, it's awesome", he said, "Oh, you were great out there", you know, I said, "Hey, I gave you the comb", and he goes, "Oh, nobody noticed", for those that didn't see the musical, I was supposed to have the razor in my hand, he was supposed to reach back and there was a line that he says, he sings, you know, um, you know, you're nervous, if we're Nunzio's nervous, I'm nervous, Nunzio slit my throat, he's supposed to do that with the razor in his hand, he had a comb, he didn't, if it were me, and I was like, you know, a grade A actor like he is, I probably would have looked back and said, "Are you kidding me?", and stopped, he, no, he just kept going right through it, and, and, and his response to me was, "Nobody noticed, don't worry", really incredible group of kids, you might want to comment a little bit.
Well, and, and the line was, not, you know, that, uh, you know, that he cuts me or whatever, it was, it was that, when Nun- when Nunzio, uh, gets, uh, gets upset or gets nervous, uh, then, uh, I don't look pretty.
Yes.
So, um, but, uh, it was fantastic, I got to work with him and my understudy, you know, filled in on Friday night here, um, so, you know, uh, it, it was, what was great about that is that it's, it's amazing, and, and Dan and I had the same, the same experience of this, like, we had no practice with the, the curtain call. So, we got there and it was like a surprise, like, "Oh, by the way, you have to do a curtain call with us", and we're like, "What, what?", so I'm not going out there, I, I don't, we haven't practiced, you guys practiced that like for days to get that right. There were a couple girls that, like, were in charge of us, making sure we knew where to go, it grabbed us and were pulling us around the stage, because like literally, we're like, wait, wait, where, where am I supposed to stand, and they yanked us around the stage, like, you know, hey, you're, you're like one of the students, you're, we're, we're the teacher, you're the student now, move over here, you know, type thing, and it was amazing just to see them take charge and that ownership of that.
One of them, her, her name was Emily, I still remember because this left shoulder still hurts, because, you know, she said, "Oh, you have to do this, and we have to do this, and then we have to bow", and I go, "What?", she goes, "Don't worry, I'll have your hand, it's okay", it wasn't okay. We, we were supposed to walk back. We were supposed to walk backwards and back up, I turned around.
Pulled us backwards, like literally.
I broke away, yeah.
But no, it was, it was great, um, and they, just the reaction, the students of us being there, they were, they were excited that there are a couple of adults that were really. Excited, you know, here to be for us, in doing this fun, this fun piece for us. So, um, it, it, just to echo your words about being backstage and seeing that piece of it, it was, it was, it was a lot of fun. Um, you know, we had a great, they had a great turnout also for it, uh, so it was one of, yeah, the students, one of the things they said to us, and Aiden was one of those, this is still, it's the last performance at the stage. You know, we're the class that gets the last performance in. And so it was, it was a very bittersweet night, they were crying at the very end because of that piece and of that, so.
Yeah, they were, they were awesome, they were really great, um, another, um. Really nice thing that happened last week was ball for box, I think it was last week, right? But last week at the middle school, Mrs. Lombardo did a great job organizing the event, they were somewhere at around four grand, um. There were parent volunteers who actually came in and they were the ones who shaved people's heads, um. They, they, they were, they were fantastic, they gave up their time to be there, one of mine is actually a barber here, uh, locally. And, um, you know, the whole ATMS community was there in the auditorium that day, and they were, they were really awesome, did a great job. Last, I know I said it last meeting, I just want to remind people that we had to move back the timeline for bids. For the auditorium project, we're looking at April fourth now, hopefully is the opening bid day, we still do not have approval yet for New York State. Um, you know, final approval, we're still going through that process, hopefully, we're ready for April fourth, the longer we have to keep moving this back. You know, I'm concerned, of course, the impact that might have.
Any questions, Superintendent, who's turned Newsies into Sweeney Todd with his description of being barber there? All right, if not. We'll move on to reports to the board, and we have finance. Oh, that Allison just roasted it.
So, all of you have seen most of this presentation, we're gonna skip ahead to a lot of this, a lot of focus on the expenditure budget, talk of revenue budget tonight. You know, open it up, force some questions, board can certainly have some conversations, a lot of study conversations. So, here, we talked about all legislative priorities, I'm gonna jump through this, um, one of the things that, um. We did put on the screen early on in the presentation, I think it was our first presentation, is this right here, this, this slide shows our foundation aid. And that the increase in the foundation aid right now, in the governor's budget, the executive budget, is only a twenty-four thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollar increase, okay? That's where it currently stands. There's some good news with the House budgets, one House budgets, a little bit later. Here's the foundation aid comparison, Allison, if you want to touch on that.
Yeah, it just shows, um, what the calculated foundation aid would be versus what's payable right now using present law. And then the dotted line, I believe, is the governor's budget.
Great, so I'll jump through these again, these, we spoke on all of these a couple of times already. Um, one of the things that we do hope that we see something put in the budget for is, is, uh. Some grant money that districts can use, that's flexible grant money for safety and wellness, okay? It's certainly been an added cost for all districts. It would be great to see some money tagged for that for every district, maybe at a per pupil amount. Skip this. Okay, so what, what this here is, if you look at the column that says foundation aid, okay, and you see where it says difference. It shows three hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars. That's the difference between the February school aid runs and the governor's executive budget. So, with the new school aid runs, if they just went with those numbers, we would get an additional. Okay, beyond the twenty-four thousand seven seventy-five, we would get an additional three hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars. Still not enough. Okay, but that's what we would get additionally if. They just used the, the February school aid runs, right?
And this is, again, the tax cap calculation, uh. I won't go through the whole thing, but it just starts out with the prior year levy limit and goes through, you know, several lines of calculations. Adding pilots for the current year, subtracting pilots for the forthcoming year. And then adding in any exclusions for capital expenditures, so in the end, our levy limit plus exclusions. Is thirty-seven million two hundred ninety-nine thousand four hundred five dollars, or a three point zero eight percent increase. So you can see at the bottom there versus prior year, would be a difference of about two, just over two point five million dollars.
Here are just some numbers to look at, certainly we can come back to this slide later, but just guys to give you an idea of if you went to the levy, what that equates to. The column on the far right is with. Whatever number is plugged in for the levy increase on the far left-hand column. It's, it includes the twenty-four, twenty-five number in the eight-year average, okay? So that far right-hand column would be with, and that's why you see that far right-hand column number changing, going from two point oh all the way down to one point eight eight. Okay, that's what happens if you had a levy of what was on the far left, all right?
Okay, so the, uh, budget is pretty much completed, the expenditure budget, and these are the revenues that would. Uh, basically balance the budget, um, so you can see the total budget is eighty-seven million seventy-two thousand two hundred twenty-nine dollars, which is a three point zero eight percent increase over prior year. And I need, um. Just going down on the left, the real property taxes, the payment in lieu of tax are the pilot agreements, interest on property taxes. Uh, continuing ad admissions, tuition, health services, other tuition that we build other districts for. Um, those are for kids that are attending private schools, private parochial schools in our district, we build back their home district. Um, Native American tuition, um, that's for Native American students attending our, our middle school, high school. Interest and earnings on bank balances, and then below that, you'll see rental of property that's for, you know, building usage. Commission, sale of scrap, uh, self-insurance. Bosie's refunds, refund of prior year's expenses, gifts and donations, unclassified revenues, transportation charges. And on the right, you'll see the, the state aid, which we had seen in the other, these numbers are a little different, you'll notice, than the. Previous slide showing state aid, and that's because we are required to, um, appropriate some of the state aid back to the Tuscarora School. So it's reduced based on student count, and we move that aid over to the Tuscarora School because. We have to report that to the state, um, and then you'll see impact aid, our federal aids, Medicaid. For total revenues of seventy-nine million eight hundred fifty-one thousand seven hundred sixty-three dollars. And then to balance, um, I'm budgeting interfund transfers of one point, I'm sorry, is that two point three million? Um, appropriated fund balance of two, just over two point one million, and then the different reserve usages. Capital reserves, which are planned use, eight hundred ten thousand and two hundred thousand there for the technology reserve, and then ERS at four hundred thousand, TRS at four hundred thousand, workers comp at. Five hundred thousand, the tax surchargeary reserve at a hundred twenty-one thousand four hundred thirty-three dollars. And employee benefits reserve, uh, at three hundred thousand to balance. So, the total expenditure budget is, again, eighty-seven million seventy-two thousand two hundred twenty-nine dollars, our revenues. Our actual revenues are seventy-nine million eight hundred fifty-one thousand seven hundred sixty-three dollars, so we need just over seven point two million dollars to balance the budget.
And, and remember, that number right now is with the current state number plugged in, what, what the governor has in the governor's budget.
Right.
Okay, so, on the revenue side, so. If we get an increase there, if they come through with three percent. That, the amount needed then reduces based on the money that's coming in from the state.
Yeah, but if they come to three percent, is that the three hundred and fifty thousand, or what?
So, no, no, three, three, so three percent, so if you go back, if you look, so our foundation aid is about twenty-four million, you see top right-hand corner, Rick? So about twenty-four million, so you figure it's about seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, somewhere around there, okay? If they, if you get to three percent. Oh, sure, and every year, as, as you know, right, every year, we appropriate for people, remember, some of that short, if we go to the next slide.
Yep. Yep, and, uh, this is how we would balance it, we want to balance it with, uh, those two reserves, those capital reserves are planned use of reserves, so. The capital transportation reserve is what we buy our buses with, the capital technology reserve is what, uh, we use to support technology in the district, instructional technology. The Greenway bond, we actually, that's planned as well, that's for that, uh, Greenway project that was done, um, in two thousand eleven, I believe. Uh, eight hundred thousand dollars, now we normally budget four hundred thousand, I doubled it this year.
And this is the last year.
This is the last year, we get it, but I still have money in the.
No, we have money in the account, this is the last year we can pay off, because that, I think that project is going to be paid for.
Correct, so we'll, we'll be getting money after the bond is over. And we knew that going into it, I think, so host community monies, we plan on transferring one point five million to cover debt service. So, even with, with those, at the end, we have three point, just over three point nine million dollars. To balance after that, now, these are all somewhat, except for host community and Greenway, uh, four hundred thousand of Greenway. Uh, you know, there, those other two are planned in the, in the, uh, four hundred thousand of the Greenway money is planned, so the other two. Um, host community monies, we have sitting there for years like this, you know, when we need to balance it. Balance the, uh, debt service, we're allowed to use that money for that, and remember, you know, we, when I budget, I'm budgeting based on. Not me, what, what the worst expectation is of expenditure, so it doesn't mean we're going to spend it all, you know, it just means I have to budget for it in case. You know, we budget extra always, because we never know if we're going to have a family come in with special needs children, or, you know, whatever happens, happens, but I, I always have to budget it. Because we can never go over our voter-approved budget.
Yeah. Those three, those four, airport transportation, host community, if you use them numbers. Will they, will those numbers be at zero next budget, or will they?
We're gonna, another slide's coming, it'll show you like what we have currently in those, right, but no, none of those will be at zero. But, Rick, I think to your point, or maybe not to your point, let me, let me add to that. One of the things that we're concerned about, like when we build this budget, like with the revenue budget, is that there's. That there's some money left over so that these reserves continue to be replenished at least a little, in the tougher years, you're going to be able to do that less, right? You know, right, in which this year and maybe next year, or a couple of those years, but then the idea is, you need to be able to start putting something back in there, right? The more that we drain them, the more that you're worried for the following year, okay, yeah.
Uh, capital transportation, are we, we're getting buses, that's, is that the bus number, or is that?
Yeah, that's the amount we're planning to spend on new buses this year.
That's probably that, seven buses?
Right, six to seven, depending on the price increases.
Six, six, seven buses, there might be even, there might be a vehicle in there.
Eight hundred ten thousand, no vehicles, just buses, yeah. Last year, we budgeted a little more because we bought some facilities vehicles, if you remember.
But yes, as far as number of buses to turn over our fleet, that's exactly right. Yep, that's correct, so, that, next slide, good, good, all good questions, and keep stopping us and we'll keep going back and forth, this is important.
So, to balance, after all interfund transfers and planned use of reserves, again, is just over three point nine million. We're going to budget the tax surchargeary reserve at a hundred twenty-one thousand four hundred thirty, and that's, again, those are monies that are when people, um, file. Uh, grievances against their property taxes and such, um, to pay that, that fee that we have to pay. Workers comp reserve, five hundred thousand dollars, employee benefits reserve, three hundred thousand, ERS, four hundred thousand, and TRS, four hundred thousand. And then a use of our appropriated fund balance at just over two point one million. Um, and I did, you know, Dan and I have been looking very closely at the budget this year, and I indicated to him, you know, this current year, we. I balanced the budget with the appropriated fund balance, but now I know, I'm in a position to know, we're not going to be using it. So I can use it for next year, so I'm balancing the budget with it next year.
Yep.
That looks like a loan number, is that a loan number, is that?
Well, that only, so, so that, that only pays for a portion of, of the reserve, right, we have other built into the budget.
Yeah.
This is above and beyond that, right?
Well.
Basically.
Correct, so, so what happened, both of them went up right this year, if you go back, but I think we have a slide coming up, both of them went up, one of them though went up by over. Two percent, it went over by over two percent, and a- after it's over by a certain number, you're actually allowed to use that to offset the levy. A little bit, right, so, in the tax cap calculation, excuse me, thank you. What it does is it raises the tax cap, but that's what they allow you to do, well, you know. We know, great that is, but that's, in essence, what they're saying is, because one of those, because of the amounts that are. Being pulled that year from either ERS or TRS, once it reaches that percent, then you're able to do that.
So, this is a review of our, our reserves as they stand right now, so these. The green line indicates the balance at the year end, twenty-three, twenty-four, if I were to use everything I budgeted this year, meaning our budget would max out. And I'd be using everything we have, and that would be the balance left over, um, I know that's not going to happen. So, those numbers are actually less than they would be, you know, than I anticipate.
In other words, at the end of this year, there's going to be more in those than there is right now, because we don't have to draw down on them at the end of twenty-three, twenty-four.
So to just look quickly, like the tax cert reserve, it sure, it currently shows two hundred sixty, just over two hundred sixty-four thousand. I have another hundred twenty-one thousand budgeted for next year, which would reduce that amount by a hundred twenty-one thousand. Uh, workers comp, five hundred thousand. Um, you know, there's just over a million dollars in there, now, the only two, uh, capital reserves too that we can continue to add to, there's three, I'm sorry. We have a capital transportation reserve that we can add to up to five million dollars, that's not full yet, we have a capital improvements reserve that's, uh. Up to ten million dollars, that's not full yet, and we have the twenty twenty-three capital technology reserve that we can fund up to three million dollars, so. Those three are the three capital reserves that we can, um, continue to fund if we have the ability to do so. But the rest, all the other capital, um. Reserves are full. Does anybody have any questions?
On the reserves here. Okay, so, these were the TR, this is the TRS rate we showed, so that went up from nine point seven six to ten point zero two. The ERS, this is the one that went up two point one percent. For next year. What you're looking at right here is the twenty-three, twenty-four levy, so you see the two eighteen, so this has nothing to do with what we're talking about for twenty-four, twenty-five. And if you look, the seven-year average increase was one point seven nine percent for those years. We always end with this one, uh. We were in a really bad place in thirteen, fourteen, most fiscally stressed in the state, um, now you see where our fiscal stress rating is. Uh, give the board and the business office, um, all the credit in the world for that, and, um. One of the things to remember, this budget season, there's a few things to remember, um. We've, we, and you saw on the board agenda. We've, we, and you saw on the board agenda tonight, there were a number of retirements. Many of those retirements, and we've been telling you that this is coming, right? Are not being filled. So through attrition, those people are retiring, and we're not backfilling those jobs. Our, our numbers over the last, you know, decade or so in the district have shifted down. We've already made those adjustments at the, at the elementary level. We did that. We did that at the, to a degree at the middle school. Now that bubble is moving, has moved out of the high school, so we've, we're reduced that number. We could have done it a year or two ago. We didn't cuz we were in COVID, coming out of COVID. And we were making sure that. We had the services in place in small class as to, to, to keep people up. Uh uh because of the numbers in our high school, we're gonna be appropriately staffed. We knew this was coming. This is how we've helped keep that expenditure budget. At the number that it is going into next year. Okay. Couple other things to keep in mind. Obviously, you're gonna have to talk a little about the, the levy. We can pull these slides up. I can move them back and forth. You know, there, there's numbers that are important, right? You know, the, the inflation rate's been over three percent. The, the um. Cost of living increase for people on social security has been over three percent. It's over three percent this year. The year before was like eight point seven percent. These are all numbers that I think play into the conversation when you talk about what you're gonna look for. For, for the levy. Our plan would be this, right? You're seeing a budget right now that's created the revenue budget with the idea of the three point zero eight. And getting twenty-four thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars from New York State as an increase. Okay, as opposed to three percent from New York State. Well, if, if, if that number came in at three percent, what we would do on that side is reduce some of the reserves. That we're putting toward this. So whether it be the one point five million dollars in host. Host communities or, or the unappropriated fund balance, you would want to apply less of that because. You know, my, my thought, and I think what we're hearing, is that next year's gonna be a pretty tough year too. Hopefully then we start to see some improvement, right? One other question she had before I said. Okay, I'll keep the clicker, cuz if you want me to go back during discussion, I can do it.
Thank you.
All right, so moving into more discussion, the tax levy is the item before the study. We begin the discussion. We do not need to have it set tonight, but I do believe that we need to begin. Uh healthy conversation about it tonight to possibly continue on the next meeting. Next meeting, though, we would need to have it set, correct? So we don't have one before that?
That's not true. Ri- right, no, no. You're good.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, we actually would have two more meetings, but it's the day after that we have. And they've already done that. They've already done that. It's, it's the, the, our April third meeting, is that? We have one in April. That meeting, I think the day after or something like this, is the day morning has information that has to, has to go out. So we would have to know by then. I think that's, I think that might be right.
Well, that is the next, that's our next meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's not another one after that, right? Yeah.
That's right.
That's right. That's why we begin the discussion today. That would be the latest we could talk about, you know, to accept whatever we decide is on the third then. Which is during break. So if, is there anyone going away then during break, or that's, that's not gonna be here, or you guys all gonna be here on the third?
When is that, April third?
Yeah. So it's, that's the Wednesday after Easter. So we begin a discussion tonight then of what we need to see, cuz like um. Obviously, that anything that we do with the levy limit, anything that comes in from additional from the state is gonna go to offset that, the, the um. Expenditure side budget where we're taking from reserves and from the uh allocated fund balance. So we have to have that discussion then of what we wanna see the, that portion of the tax increase look like. So, can you go back to that slide, Dan?
Yep. You're good.
Yep. Anyone wanna start, start discussion?
You know, we're, we're in a bad spot. And probably most schools are. You know, those numbers look like an eight-year average under two percent. You can't beat it. And. The residents don't remember that. They don't get educated on that. They look, they look at what's happening today. Somehow, and, and, and um, that would be great for our goal system. That we thought it might be bad next year, maybe starting hitting better, maybe. Then you can, you can look at things, but I just don't see the economy or the state. The way I see what's going on in the state having a lot more revenue coming. I, I think they're spending it. And areas that maybe they should be spending it, but I just don't see that happening. And that's just a guess in my mind. And, and I, I know you mentioned that social security went up three percent, but on the average house owner. That's forty, fifty dollars. And they're wondering the gas tank giving you food. But we have to educate three, four thousand kids. With uh six hundred staff. And I understand that, but. I am, even though I know what we don't do today affects us tomorrow and the next day. But I am a little uncomfortable with three point me. I really am. I know what else to say, cuz I know it's a bad dilemma for us. And, and we're not even talking about, uh is there any more discussion on electric buses?
There, there, we have a, we'll have a piece that we're gonna discuss in a little bit about a resolution that we're gonna put together for the next meeting. Um obviously, other districts are starting to oppose that, and we wanna come together as every single school district setting a resolu-, uh passing a resolution. Opposing that, uh that action.
Because I seen on a federal level since today, uh who was talking, I mean, pay a lot of the taxes, but they wind up at fifty percent.
As Steve said, you know, one of the, one of the local school districts put out, they, their board and superintendent put out a resolution, I think, you know. I, I've shared with all of you in an email uh this evening, so you'll be able to take a look at it. And then my, my recommendation is that we do the same in our next meeting. Listen, at, at, at a time when the, to, I think we're, to what you're saying, to your point here. You know, at a time when things are tighter, you're gonna tell us that we need to pay three times as much as we do for buses. Oh, and by the way, we don't have a choice to transport our kids. We have to do that, right? So um, but you're gonna make us pay three times as much for each bus. When, when studies haven't even been completed and done on how districts can even make this work. So I, I, I think they need to hit a pause button.
If you already have bonds out there, adding to that might put people or districts over that legal limit that you're allowed to do. Who's gonna, not many are gonna have the cash to buy them. They're the borrower.
There, there's just another reason to hit the pause button, right?
Yeah, not, and I understand it, and, you know, and it affects the whole community. I'm more familiar with the town, but it affects everyone, because you're seniors everywhere. But like, in the makeup, the town is sixty percent seniors. Okay, I don't know what it is in the weed field or what. I think sooner or later. We have to look at how we do business as a district. And I don't even have an answer or a suggestion, because I don't never wanna hurt the employees or the students. But sooner or later, we have to do something different because if the state goes, continues in this direction. For four or five years, we can't continue to do this. And, and that's not an answer for tonight, but it's, it's something that we should think about.
Can we go back to the fund balances? You know, the, the other one that. What, what is the percentage from last year that we did to this year? You know, Ken? Fund balances that we're, we're taking. Yeah, are we comparable or?
I can tell you. Just give me a minute. Go with other questions. I'll find it for you.
Uh the reason why I'm asking, I mean, is if, if we've actually increased this number, I, I have concerns. Now we're, we're increasing this number and we're wanna cut back on the other.
We, we increase, so, so here's what's important to remember. We've increased the amount that we're. Uh pulling from reserves or the host communities, cuz that's the primary place, right?
Right.
That we're, that we're increasing. However, we don't believe that this year we're going to be dipping in to the reserves. In any real significant way. So in other words, like, we've been very good. Right, so this year, I would, I would think that we probably, those, those numbers that are. Right here, that are the twenty-three, twenty-four balances, those are if we utilize all of the funds that we. Budgeted to use. We won't. We don't expect it. So all of those numbers that are in yellow. Those are actually gonna be higher at the end of this year, okay? So we're not drawing down.
My question into that is, we do this, I know that happens year over year, but we, we try to minimize the effect on that. But where do you see this fund balance being affected? We look like we were actually gonna be using quite a bit of it.
You know what? Again, I'm gonna say, you know, when I budget, I budget. No, uh thinking we're gonna use the most, we're gonna, you know, I budget. It doesn't always happen, you know. I, I always have to have.
That's why, that's why I was asking if the number's higher. If you're using more in our fund balance, then that's.
So here, here you go, Bob. So if, if we go back just to apples to apples here, right? If we go back to this slide right here, the amount needed to close the budget, it was seven. It's seven million two hundred twenty thousand four hundred sixty-six dollars for twenty-four, twenty-five. The amount needed to close the budget is. For the twenty-three, twenty-four that we appropriate was seven million sixty-one thousand zero three three. Okay, so it's a, what, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars more from last year to this year.
But again, remember that number would be reduced if you get more aid.
Yep. So we could have, we should, we could actually be in a, we will, but, but I think, well, I, I don't think. You know, we talked about this at the beginning. I think what you saw from both of them, I know what you saw for both of the, the one-house budgets, okay? The, 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 it was that they were both asking for three percent for, for whole hour bus. Okay, so even, even if they come somewhere in between those numbers, if they did. Would we be able to drop this to a number that's actually, to, to Rich's point, you know, geez, the situation that we're in. We would actually be able to appropriate from these less than what we did last year. So that's, that's good. I mean, listen, I'd like to be in a very different position than we're all in, and we all would. But given, I think, what you're seeing i- in the state, given what you're seeing um with what's um. Right now, in this state aid runs that, the only the governors are out there, what she's put out is a district, we're in a. A better position than, than certainly some who, they're, they're looking at one, two million dollar reductions on their foundation aid. Because they were, in essence, as far as states concerned, in the formula, getting too much money all along.
Even if we don't get that three percent in foundation, and they just go with the, the, the runs coming out of the two-house budget. You're taking another three hundred and sixteen thousand off of that number right there.
Can you go back to the percentage? No, no, what's a difference?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yep.
Yeah.
So if we went to two point nine nine, it would be thirty-two thousand eight hundred difference, right?
Correct. That's the difference between going to the max and not, that's right.
Well, where's that number now?
We went to two point nine nine, we dropped down thirty-two thousand eight hundred.
The, the way to. Yeah, the way to look at this is, is whatever, whatever number you go to here, the difference between that and what the levy limit is, is over here. So these numbers, of course, because they're below three point zero eight, are less than that number by this amount. These numbers, if you went above it, would be above it by those numbers.
I mean, to Rick's point, I, I mean, I'm one of the retirees to what you were actually. I do understand it.
Rick's retired?
Yeah, he's, no, he's, he's supposed to be.
But it's not about me.
No.
But, yeah, I understand what's.
I mean, senior citizens, I'm, and, and, and I, I wanna, you know, not have as much impact as we can.
Yeah.
But I don't, on the other hand, I don't wanna get it where we're gonna be paying it down the road either, or it's gonna go through the roof on us, and then we got big issues. So that's because everything we drop down, it, it, every year over year, it's gonna increase, you know what I mean?
So when, when will we find out?
Well.
Well, theoretically.
April first is due.
Theoretically.
So I mean, um, if it does turn out that we do get extra money, I mean, if you said that they're three hundred thousand.
Well, that's if you go by, you have to, right now, if you went by, let's, let's say they get the three percent that they're, they're, they're hoping for. And you went just by our, the, the run that they did for the two-house budget, there's like three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars more we would be getting in that. And then, if you think about that, all right, let's say, we're gonna use that to lower the tax levy. So we have to now take from there anything that's in the difference column in parentheses from that three hundred thousand, and that's would provide it. So like, if we went to two point five, we're actually getting a extra one hundred thousand. From the, that run as opposed to the, the three hundred and sixteen thousand.
Chart right there.
Yeah.
Yes.
So is that eligible or is that?
I mean, I, you know, I, you can't go to three percent. I don't think that would be prudent in this. And I mean, two point five for me is very, no, I mean, I don't, no, I don't. Here, here's the thing. You know, you're looking at a year where you gotta find that, that balance between what is. You know, and if, you're gonna have the people that always say, I, I, well, one dollar's too high. You know, you're gonna have the other people who are saying, ah, I don't care. It's, it's, it's in my escrow. I don't know what, whatever I'm paying. But you gotta find that balance for the in-between, for the, you know, of what that is. And I don't, three point oh eight, I don't think is gonna fly.
Number compounds every year, so it's more, it's gonna drive us.
And again, we're not setting anything tonight. We're just having an open discussion of what, where we're, where we're gonna get it. Cuz I want, I want Allison to have an idea of like where our minds are. So that when, if she says, okay, you're, you're around here, she can, you know, you can maybe even adjust the page with other percentages around there to, to show where that is. For the next meeting when we do have to set that.
They did just go down to two point five, so that's, we don't think any further down.
Well, if you look at it, she gave us a one percent break, you know, various, variance there.
So I think the one that we gotta consider is a group, a couple of things, Rick, is, one, I think the state is starting to spend money on the job with sailors, and we're gonna end up with profit. The budget's gonna be the vote for the entire state, but it affects the school districts and the others. But to Rich's point, what I'd like to see too is, since I started, I think in twenty twenty, when we talked about the limit, we had the same discussion. We wanna give that friendly discount to the residents. I understand that. But. I'd like to see the total of what we didn't get to the cap to where we are, if we got to the limit, and what money is that, and what made the difference compound with. Because, again, we talked about two point five, we'll be in this boat in two years, talking about how short we are.
You're correct, cuz in two years, we're four hundred and twenty thousand dollars less bringing in.
So if those other years, we were at limit of one nine nine, and we didn't say one seven nine, we had an additional funding four years later. That compounds to say four or five hundred thousand. I don't know what the math is, but we'd be in a better situation today than talking about trying to do two point five today. Because in two years, we're gonna be needing one point four million to make up in the, in the difference. About the months today, we need to think about conscious in two years. But I agree, but at some point, we're gonna have to say. Where, where do we stop? You know, where, where do we start really looking at the budget when we can? Now, that's not, but what would that be? What would that be, said, if we aren't conscious today about getting what we can, in two years, we're gonna be.
Exactly.
Allison, you know what would have been a nice number under, unless it's on.
Forty-two?
What?
Never mind, I just gave a random number.
You know the three point eight percent that we, that, that's the. And each one of those years that, that we had it, that you have on the right-hand talent, what was that number?
Oh, oh, you mean, you mean, for, for each, I get it, so.
The, the chart.
Hold on, we haven't, we haven't, no, we haven't, I know what you mean. This is, well, this is showing, no, this is showing you what it was each year, you're asking, what was the levy limit each one of those years?
Yeah.
That's what you're asking, we, we, we can certainly show that. We'll, we'll, we'll prepare that, yeah.
So you just said, yeah.
That, that's exactly what I said, it's not to see the difference of, you know, again, if we cut back two or three percent, of course, that's a significant amount of money that we. We gave the, you know, understanding, understanding when the budgets are tight, but again, if we wanna survive, we gotta really think.
They would have to be on that same chart.
I, I know that, like, a year that you wanna mirror, you wanna look at that, the increase that, that year that was the two point nine, we were above a three. For our taxing levy increase, because I can remember our whole discussion was, that the year before, we were almost at zero, where we couldn't. We had a super majority just to go off of zero, you know, we didn't have a super majority to go above that, cause that, that, that year seventeen, eighteen. Was point six eight, that was our, that was our levy limit. And it was at six, and I can remember having this discussion that we don't wanna go to three, we don't wanna see a number at three, and that's where we, we. Fell back onto there, um, so that, that was a year that was very similar to that, and if you look at that, let's say that our budget that year was what, um. Thirty-two, so it was like three hundred and twenty, uh, has like a hundred and, hundred and sixty thousand that we would have gotten that year. And add that hundred and sixty for how many years after that on there, six? So you're talking almost a million dollars that we have not brought in, um, over those years from eighteen, nineteen to now.
Every time you lower it, it's gonna affect down the road.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at the, the mirroring of that, that amount for that particular year was very close to what this year is just like, so.
We can add that for the next one, easy.
I think in, in, in business, when you're running into problems like this, now, it's different here, because we have employees and students. It's not a selling a product, okay, so it makes it more difficult here, but in business. If you see the outlook grim. You gotta adjust what you do inside. And I don't know what the, and, okay, but something's gotta change, because you can't keep on going, say, three percent increase. Cause you're, you're gonna use your fund balance, and then we really have a problem, then you're gonna have to do what you did eleven years ago. And that you don't want.
That's right, and, and when you, you know, we're, we're really good point, right, I agree, and one of the reasons why we talked about attrition. Right, you know, that, that we, one of the reasons why we pushed for, um, and, and all of you supported. The retirement centers, you know, we have those, the, 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 if, for, for people that, um, for positions. That we're not bringing back, there's significant savings from a, um, teacher who's retiring to zero, okay? But there's also savings when we are replacing those positions, right, that, so that savings annually, um, you know, is about fifty something thousand dollars. So, you know, those are the things that we're doing to adjust, to make sure that we're not in a worse position.
Now, because that's just. Is that calculated in the?
So, the, the number of teacher, the teacher retirements are. We have some additional positions that we still could see some attrition, so, you know, here, here's what I think. Th- this year, we've had some attrition, next year, I believe, lots of attrition, so what you say, you know, wh- what are we gonna do next year? I believe that we'll have some more retirements and attrition there, and if we don't have attrition, because of the numbers in our buildings, we'll be able to still reduce a little bit. And so those additional positions, um, would, you know, people, if we didn't, if we didn't have retirements, we'd have some people wanting out, you know, the preferred eligibility list.
Yeah, now, what I meant was, the cost savings, is I know, we just voted on it tonight, there's the cost savings calculated in this budget.
Yes, in other words, when we put together, so Rich's question is, when we put together the expenditure budget, did we already calculate in the fact that we have retirees? Yes, yeah.
With all we have to mind, we got, uh, the COVID funding, is, was that part of the budget or was that a?
That, that was separate too, and, um, I think I gave all of you a, that, that sheet, if you look on there. Everyone in green on, on that sheet, uh, so the names on there, that's why it's not, that's why it was an executive session item. Um, those were all of the people who were on final rate agreements, all of those were not. That was above and beyond the budget, they were all providing additional supports, and those are.
Did I remember whether retirement's just like in our budgeting in general?
No.
No.
Correct, that is correct.
So if you were to bring all, like, just to give you an example, bring all those positions in and say, hey, we really need these and everything, you're looking at. What, another three, four million dollars up in, you know, funds, if we wanted to actually say that we're gonna keep those.
So going forward, you said attrition on next year, I mean, those teachers that are teaching, uh, retiring. Those positions are gonna have to build itself, right?
No, we would, it, it looks the way that we look at it, probably next year, we could have a couple, a few more positions that through attrition if we get retirements. We, we wouldn't have to fill.
Is the number of students going down, or I know last year it was going up.
It let, let, well, it was supposed to go down, right, it was supposed to go down by thirty-something students, um, instead it went up. Thirty-something students from, from where we were last year, the, the number of students, uh, over the last decade or so. Has declined in our district, right, instead of class sizes of about three hundred, where a class size is around two fifty, two sixty. Or two sixty, so, so we've certainly seen that reduction, you know, the, the, the issue is this, if you, if you reduce. In one year even, we'll see what happens next year, it'll be interesting to see if we start seeing increases, when we do, the good news is there. That as part of the state aid formula, you get so much per pupil, so if you go up thirty, forty kids, you're getting more aid. But, what, what I, um, what, what I'm gonna say was this, let's say you lose ten kids in a year, but let's make it simpler. Um, let, let's call it, um, thirteen kids, let's say you lose thirteen kids in a year, well, you have grades K through twelve. That means if you lost one in each grade level, you've lost one kid, can you do anything with your class? With, with the number of sections, no, okay, so let's take that and go from thirteen to thirty-nine, now you've lost three kids. Can you change a sec, can you change your number of sections, you know, you really have to lose. Many students to get to the point where you, let's call it twenty-five, twenty-two, but twenty, depending on the grade level, that you're gonna have to lose before. You can lose a section, so, at the high school, we really, a couple of years ago, we could have started to adjust, we didn't because we had the COVID funds. And we, we didn't, we didn't touch it, but we're at the point where we think those numbers should hold pretty steady, we'll see, um, you know. But, but you know, our numbers should hold pretty steady, that said, we have a lot of nice developments. We've, we, we think that that certainly led to some of the students, well, we know it did, cause some of those students who are living in some of those homes. Started the school year when their homes were, you know, they were just able to move in, and other ones, you know, moved in a few months after the school year. So those things are, those things are really good for us, those things are happening, we hope that they continue to happen and happen at a little bit faster rate. Because again, those students coming in, we get additional aid, let alone additional tax dollars.
And understand, the, the only way you, you, you could realize with that smaller number of students at each grade level, um, you know. In being able to reduce staffing is if you totally restructure the entire district, which is a, a enormous undertaking, it's not even been talked about, but you'd have to have like. You know, in our town, to the primary buildings and intermediate building stuff, we put all those grade levels in one building, and then you can say, hey, you know. This building had not, uh, six kids at this grade level, this, we lost six, and this building lost six, now we put them all together, that's when all classes down. And you can, and, and just, that, I mean, that is nowhere near on the spectrum of being able to be done right now, with, because of the, we don't have the room of the buildings for it, but.
Well, um, we've talked about it, but here's, here's the real problem, right, we, we've talked about it, we never get it. We never even get that far to you, because here's the problem, we have such a large district, that if, size-wise, geographically. That if we were going to make one of our buildings K one, and we're gonna make one of our buildings two, three. And we're gonna make one of our buildings four, five, that the students who live on the furthest end of Colonial Village. When, if, let's say, it's K one, those students now have to get all the way over to Eric Road. There's a couple of different ways that you can do that, you can pick up all your kids in your zone, and now have three different drop-off times in all of your places. Now, how long are those kindergartners on their bus when they get over there? Or, you can have a kindergarten first grade buses that now split up and go, now you have to have three different runs. How many drivers do we have? How many buses? And what's the cost now of the transportation? I, I, I wish, it, it, I wish we had that opportunity, because it would be something that I would absolutely push for, if we could do that. Because now, now what happens when you lose twenty students at an elementary level. At a grade level, you know that you can reduce the section, and you can really right-size the number, we, we, that's, that's. I, I think that's a fantasy land for us, g- given, given the number of drivers, given busing, given the, you know, the confines of a, of a school day. There's just too many things that we really run into, but we've, we've looked and talked about those things.
Would we, would moving fifth to the middle school be doable as?
I, I don't believe there's really the space there to do it, um. So, yeah, he, he asked if it would, if moving the, um, fifth grade to the middle school. Honestly, you know, the only way that you probably pull something like that off is by all of a sudden taking a place like West Street, I'm not saying West Street. And building all the way in the back and making one large elementary school, that's in the center of the district that you bring everybody to. And then, what you'd have to do, is you'd have, when we could do it pretty easily, you'd have to decide, what's the cost of that school? Versus, versus, how many years would it take you of saving, because you were able to knock one section off at a grade level? Let's even call it two, it's gonna take you a long time to, that, I probably won't be around anymore. To, 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 to get those savings if I'm just doing simple math in my head, right, and what, and what a new building would cost. Or a law, a huge addition would cost to do something like that, but you'd have to do it in a place that was very central. So, when, 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 it, it's why it's really hard sometimes to compare, you know, apples to apples when you're looking at other districts. Smaller district, you can do something like that, a place where they built the entire district, like down the road at Star Point, where they're all on one campus, you can do that. We, but we, we just don't have that luxury, not the way we're currently set up.
You know, you obviously need more revenue, uh, have we did some, any calculations on developments? You know, like Amazon, and there's a lot of big projects going on in town, that probably near, near an apps. Uh, but I know they're under pilot programs, have we done any calculations of possible future income? At, on the earliest days of a pilot program?
So, so a great example is Amazon, right, and then, and the, the Amazon money is, um. The first few years of it, it's a hundred percent of next to nothing, okay? Then, then it goes down to ten percent of what the revenue is, then it starts to jump up, so, w- we, we can see. I, I'd be guessing, but I wanna say it's like seven, eight years down the road, where that's gonna jump, but remember, when, when that jumps. It's offset in the money, so, in other words, when, in the, excuse me, the tax cap calculation. So, so let's, next year, we're getting like eleven or thirteen thousand dollars from Amazon and pilot, that's what it is in year one, something like that.
Supposed to go up about ten percent a year.
Well, it freezes, they actually, the last one that came out, it freezes at like ten percent for a few years, it's like a hundred percent, a hundred percent. Something like that, then it starts to, then it starts to grow, but until those num, when, when those numbers really get at large, it's probably about seven years down the road, right? You know, Jalen, so we make a note, let's bring that last sheet that we got from them, and we'll bring that back here next time as well. It is a fifteen, fifteen-year pilot, so, interesting, I mean, the pilot had actually changed from the time that we thought. Then, to, to the time that it was truly fine, so, um.
Cause you're talking, uh, assessment or, I, I.
There's, there's going to be a good amount of money, so, when you ask. The impact that that should have down the road, I, 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 right, but you know, I think we're talking about this, right, like, down the road, what's gonna happen? When that starts to hit the levy, it's, or, when, when the pilot. Becomes significant and it hits the, 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 the tax cap, the tax cap will drop. So when you say, how, how does that impact, you know, the, the taxpayers, and what, what can we see for the taxpayers in the future? You're gonna, you're gonna get to a point where, because that pilot's up to an elevated level, it's gonna drop what you can levy without going above the levy limit. Which, you're gonna say, we're not gonna do, so that's when you'll start to see that change, and you'll start to see. Some relief in that way from at least the levy limit number.
It affects the, the tax cap every year then? Every year?
All the pilots.
During the pilot, it wasn't, it was.
Every year, so the total number of pilots are calculated, so I get all pilot, that, that total is what's used to calculate.
It's, it's, it's part of that calculation.
Now, municipalities are different than schools, but municipalities, which are not part of a pilot program. And I don't know if we could do it, called special districts, water, lighting, highway. Uh, we'll call it Amazon, they have to pay a hundred percent of what the assessment is. They don't get to use the pilot on them areas, only on the, the property, the, the pilot, but. Is, are we allowed to make special districts over there?
No, as a matter of fact, you might not remember, I think it was last spring, Steve and I were, um, in a conversation with, um. Somebody from the news about pilots and their impact and the fact that it's, it's, you know, New York State, we don't, we don't, New York State. Controls that, we don't, um, we don't get a say in the pilot or the pilot amount, um, we just are told in the end, here's what you're gonna get.
I can go back to the, uh, tax, um. Alright, so, for the sake of our discussion going forward then, um, to give them a better idea of, of a window up there. Um, what would be your? Feel comfortable with, with your highest and your lowest pers- uh, tax levy percentage increase?
I personally like to keep it under three, it's like two.
What, what, then what's your bottom number though?
If you go to two point five, that's, that's a good chunk of money there, that, that's, I think.
So again, what's, what's your bottom number?
Mine is two point nine nine.
Okay, two point nine nine to two point nine, alright, Mike? Two nine nine, like, bot, top, bottom numbers, that's your own number, okay, Jay?
I'd say somewhere two and a half to two and. One seven, two point eight.
Okay, so two and a half or two point seven, two point eight, Julie?
I'm at two point nine nine, like mine.
And that's it?
Yep.
Okay, Rick?
I'm thinking somewhere. Seven oh and two nine nine.
Okay. And I would be somewhere between the, the two nine nine to two point five, um, not saying I go to two point five, but I'm just saying, see, numbers to see. I wanna see the, so if you can then, Allison, if you would be able to take everything above two nine nine. And keep the bottom floor two point five, now expand those, those percentages in, in, in there for us. For that next meeting, and then we'll go from there for that discussion. That's why one of the top and bottom was to see those numbers. No, I wanna, I wanna give her a window that we could expand that chart if we took everything above that, I mean, we're not. It, it doesn't help us with anything above three point oh eight, because we're not, we already said we're not overriding the tax cap, so. We'll take everything off two point nine and above, two point nine nine and above, and you'll bottom out at two point five zero. And then just give us that range, next meeting, and then we'll, we'll continue this, this discussion and finalize the discussion next meeting.
So if something substantial comes in from the state, if we're first. Still, those ranges are open up for discussion again?
To go below two point five zero?
Oh, yeah, I mean.
Can you have a secondary chart that go shows below that then? Alright, how about that?
Yeah, maybe.
I just wanna give her a direction of like what to bring us back, and we'll have the discussion of the actual numbers then, next week, or next week, next meeting. But I also, I I didn't, you know, I I wanna give her some, I I them a piece of. Or give us the numbers and give us some data back with that, so that way it'll it'll give us a better view of the overall landscape of that. And yeah, if the state comes back and says, hey, you have like, you know, now seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming in, it's still, we're still not overriding the tax cap, so there's no point in having those numbers. You know, at this point, so.
So, two three quick, just recaps. The the information, also put the other information that you just asked for here, we'll bring the um, the final um, Amazon. Numbers, so everybody can kinda see that and what's gonna happen in the future there, and we'll also adjust that one slide that shows. Um, the difference between.
Yeah.
What the levy limit was that year and what we actually.
But don't even adjust that one, I would have a, have like one, one column, what the levy limit was, what we went with, and then how much, yeah. Yeah.
No, absolutely, and we can pull that even from past slides, we 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 have that, because we do it each year, no, it's good, it's good, okay.
You just don't go over the spreadsheet and re-save over it. Alright, um, continuing items for board discussion then, cuz we'll continue this one then, um, in old business when it comes to that point. Uh. I would like you to review um, and just provide any feedback you have or thoughts of what Dan emailed to you. Uh, so you won't have it in front of you right now, possibly, but it was basically from Alden, Alden, right, yeah, Alden, the um. Their resolution opposing, um, you know, the 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 timeframe for the the electric buses. So, um, look at that, we'll we'll bring, Dan and I will put something together, you know, and we'll look at that one and see if the language still coincides with what we wanna have. You know, in our language, for one, and we'll bring something to you for the next meeting, um, actually, we'll provide that probably before that meeting, so that we review it. You know, and then we can open up a discussion then.
Are we kind of accepting that? I mean, I don't know what kind of resolution or whatnot.
No, to, what we wanna do is delay or not.
Make make a more realistic timeline.
Yes.
For for the rollout of the. Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly, that's that's, that's what the ask is. Right, well, beyond, and actually, the start date, cuz remember, the the scary thing is, you're supposed to start buying in twenty twenty seven.
That's pushing the start date back, and what, uh, what the, the board president from Alden, you know, they glanced after Dan, sent that into the. The the discussion forum that we have for board presidents with NISBA, um, if you looked at what State Ed put out, I think it was last week. If they wanted an update of where our district was of, and in preparing for it, there was a a a date that they wanted, all this like submitted to them, and we're like. Re- really? Um, so I know that's that that kicked the ball rolling with the with board presidents discussing, um, you know, that in particular issue.
And 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 just the last thing I'll say on that for for now anyway, is that. The. Um, the first thing that's all districts have to do is do a study, and we actually, there's actually a group, a Wendell who's doing that through our OSIs. We're waiting for them to get in contact with us, and that's not a shot at Wendell, that, all the districts of Western New York, most. Are are looking to do a study, and so they're gonna be reaching out to work with all of them, and every district will be different with regard to what they need. And we're a district that has it all massively. So, let let alone, you know, uh, if if you were, it'd be a lot easier, if you're a district that didn't, we do. So we're gonna have to make sure that they do some extra work here when it comes to that study.
Alright, any items for board discussion? Any old business? New business? Alright, um, any public comments? Hiding over there. You, you've done it before, Allison.
So we we do, we do that, we usually do that on the meeting after, like, we kinda finalize the revenue budget, so usually it's after the April meeting. So, yeah, that absolutely comes, and it shows the breakout from the for the different towns.
And it and it looks, it looks like Mike, uh, uh, that the towns, Mike do a reset.
Right. They still can only bring in the same amount of tax revenue.
Right.
It just shifts it to, though, you know, the houses that are, it it reassessed. Well, or shifts it away from houses that are reassessed, depending on what the assessment is, yeah.
You're ready, goes down the changes, right?
Yeah, so if everybody gets reassessed, you probably not gonna go up.
Right, if everybody was reassessed at the same amount, and they all went up the same amount, you wouldn't, you wouldn't pay any more than still your share.
My my understanding of it, and I'm no expert on it by all means, as the ti- you live in a town. You're paying about fifty-two dollars per thousand, roughly, which is around fifty six, fifty-six percent tax rate. So if they reassess to a hundred percent, the tax rate will go down from fifty-two. To maybe twenty-two, just gets in the numbers. So. Maybe it won't be as bad for them. That's the theory.
Depends on what your house is worth, right, exactly.
The only effect from that, Rick, is if all houses went up even, but some of them go like this, and and that's where the ones that go up even higher are gonna pay more. That's what's gonna happen. Yeah, the only ones that pay less, right?
Alright.
Do you have any comments? Do you have any comments?
Yes, go ahead, board member comments?
I was able to go to that Newsies, um. Musical, and I gotta say, it was done professionally, it was almost like a professional event that I went to. Went seeing these kids, what they did was amazing, really, and you guys weren't too bad, and well, I didn't see you, Dan, and I did see. I did see Steve, and he he looked the part.
Wow.
I did see Dan, and I believe it was inspiring. And everyone did a great job, yeah, they did a very good job, Dan played well, even though he.
No, that's very nice.
Heads off to all the kids, it wasn't great, as well, yeah, I did see Dan Friday night, I didn't even recognize it was you. Until you started, you know, talking and had a stitch there, but great job for everyone.
His Eastern European Italian accent, that's right.
Yeah, the kids were great, kids were awesome.
Yeah, I understudy.
Yeah, that's why, can can I ask you a question, Tony, just to the audience really quick? If you're familiar with the term understudy, doesn't the understudy come in when the other person can't show up? So if I was there Wednesday and Friday, and then I couldn't be there Saturday, who would be the understudy?
Well, I couldn't show up Friday, so.
No, I'm just, I'm just, never mind.
You had to go in.
Oh, this was, I'm sorry, this was board comments, I'm sorry.
You made an understudy for two days, two two events.
I'm out of line, I'm sorry, board comments.
Yeah, alright, any other board board member comments? Alright then, um, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those abstaining, we are adjourned.
You'll all be happy to know I already sent something to all.